To order the meeting of the Saint Mary's County Board of Education for Thursday, July 14th, at 2016, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board into an executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Saint Mary's County Board of Education for Thursday, July 14th, and first up is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I have one change to the consent agenda. We are going to add 10.06, an Ethics Committee appointment, to the consent section of the agenda. So with that addition, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Board reports, welcome.
Welcome.
First meeting, all excited, and guess what? You get to go first on your board report. Jump in with both feet, go!
Okay, so this year, my focus for the school year is going to be changing the culture around school itself. It's a broad topic, but it affects everybody in school. Throughout school, we always focus on how students are performing and how they're performing academically, but a lot of things that sometimes we overlook even as students is how we feel about school. And it's hard to change the way you feel about school in just a matter of a couple months or even a year, but I think we can do that mainly by improving student-to-student relationships. A lot of times, I feel like we're focused on our individual groups. We're sort of introverted, not in the sense that we're shy, but in the sense that we don't open out and like look at other people sometimes and try to step another foot in another direction. And a lot of times, we're focused on individual things in our own schools, and then we don't look at other schools. And we're sort of not competitive between schools, but we have a large gap. And because of that, a lot of times, we don't, it's not that we don't perform well, it's just that our learning environment is sort of stunted, I guess you can say it's stunted by the fact that we're not able to put our best foot forward because all of these other social factors are sort of hindering us. So a lot of the times, that's what I'm trying to focus on, is trying to encourage students to try their best by challenging them more, trying to have a little bit more peer-to-peer interaction, so having more mentoring programs in schools and even between schools, so between the elementary and middle school levels and between the middle school and high school levels. By making students feel more connected, we can actually make our learning environment more positive and more encouraging. And overall, as the years go by, that can help us improve educationally by making students challenge their own educational limits and go beyond what they think they can do.
Fabulous. Mr. Curn?
I have nothing to report.
I have no report. Summer vacation, sorry guys.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Even though it's summer vacation, the school system is very busy. I visited the Lunch and Learn program at George Washington Carve Elementary School on Monday. The program is free, is fun, is safe, is open to all Saint Mary's County children and their parents or caregivers regardless of their income. It provides a different and exciting learning opportunity each day for the students and their caregivers. Free lunch is provided to all children regardless of their family income, and each student will be provided a free book. So far, the Lunch and Learn program is at two locations. I say so far because I'm hopeful that it will expand to other areas of the county where it's needed also. Well, it is available from 11:00 to noon at Lexington Park Elementary School and from 12:00 to 1:00 at George Washington Carve Elementary School, at each school, Monday through Thursday, and it's a four-day-a-week program. And this is the way a typical day goes at the Lunch and Learn program. Children come in and get a fantastic, healthy lunch. When I went on Monday, the menu consisted of locally grown corn on the car. Previously, the students shoved the corn, which was wonderful, and this was a new experience for some of the younger students, since some young kids believe corn comes out of a can. Then on Monday, our amazing food service workers cooked the corn, and it was delicious. There's more. Crazin' apple salad with grapes, lettuce, carrots, and cucumbers, happy-faced french fries, pepperoni pizza, three-bean salad roll, milk, apple juice, orange juice, or water. It was fantastic. I was so excited and so enthusiastic about the number of students there and parents that I couldn't eat all of my food. They had to give me a to-bag, a to-go bag to take it home to finish it. The program is fantastic. And our food services workers did a fantastic job with not only the preparation of the food, but the presentation of the food. No one left there hungry or unfulfilled. While the students were read a story by the children's librarian from the Saint Mary's County Public Library, the parents and caregivers were given a presentation, and they had an interactive session on using your food dollars wisely. And this presentation was done by the University of Maryland Food Supplement Nutrition Education Program. The parents worked in groups where they brainstormed, and here are some of the few things that they learned. Shop with a grocery list. Choose the grocery store with the best prices. Check out the dollar stores and the local farmer's market. Look at items on the higher and lower shelves. They are usually less expensive. And don't shop when you or your children are hungry or tired. You will be tempted to buy food which is not on your list. And use coupons and take advantage of store specials. And they were given this wonderful folder to take with them, and here are many wonderful handouts that I know they will place on their refrigerator. This one is on shopping strategies, and some of them were the things that I mentioned when I say those are some of the things that they learned. Another one was take-home tips, shopping strategies to save your money, use coupons. It's just one of them. Another one was unit pricing. When you go shopping, you have to look at more than just the price of the item, you need to look at the unit price. This one is cheaper, it's $1.00 for a can, for canned pears, but you get 16 ounces. But for $1.35, you can get almost twice as much, and you're only paying $4.00 per ounce. So you need to pay attention to the unit price. Another one, more tips to help you save money, and recipes. And a lot of things they said you can make yourself, you don't have to buy it already cooked. You can make pancakes, waffles, baked, you know, sweet mashed potatoes yourself. Some of these things you can do yourself. You can make cornbread and biscuits and rolls, and that can save you a lot of money. And this one is on the 10 top affordable vegetables by the pound. You can get them fresh, frozen, or canned, and they list potatoes, cauliflower, cabbage, onions, whole carrots, celery stalks, and affordable fruit. At the top of the list, watermelons, bananas, honeydew melons. And take-home tips, how to shop smart for fruits and vegetables. Fruits and vegetables come fresh, frozen, canned, or dried. And this last one is the unit pricing that I just explained to you, and things to consider before you buy in bulk. So I learned a lot of things from this session, and the parents were totally engaged. So it's learning for the parents and for the students. So I'm hoping that we can expand that program one day, and there are many people I want to thank for this wonderful program who worked hard throughout the year and the summer to make it successful for our students, parents, and caregivers. Kelly Hall, our Food Services Director, Megan Doran, our food service workers, our community partners, student and parent volunteers, building service workers, safety and security officers, the Judy Center staff, and a lot of other helpers. The learning, nurturing, and feeding of the students and the families will leave unforgettable memories of the excellent summer learning and dining opportunities at Saint Mary's County Public Schools. Time still remains to participate in this free program of learning. The last day for the program is Thursday, July 28th. So please come to this program, it's a win-win for students and parents, and it's free and it's fun. If your child enjoys learning about reptiles, then you want, and they want to see some and touch them, Reptile Man will be coming to Lexington Park Elementary School next Wednesday, July 20th, at 1:30. So be there at 12:00 noon for your free lunch and check with Lexington Park Elementary School to find out more information. It's a different program every day, and it is an excellent program. So I'll see you there when Reptile Man shows up next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Allen?
I recently attended a meeting of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, Board of Directors meeting. I'm a member of the Board of Directors. And Dr. Karen Salmon, who is our new State Superintendent, came and spoke to us. She spent about an hour with us. I've known Dr. Salmon for a long time. She and I have served on a number of statewide committees together, and it was wonderful to see her again, especially in her new role, and I loved, she talked to us about her vision for the state, for education in the state, and for the State Department itself. She really talked about the fact that because of No Child Left Behind and so many of the federal mandates that have come down, that MSD kind of morphed from being a premier resource center to a compliance center, and she wants to move it out of compliance, such a compliance-heavy focus, and move it back to a resource for systems across the state. And she talked about how she anticipated doing that, and she also talked about the fact that there are so many silos of people, that it's, nobody knows what anyone else is doing. And she said, you know, just a visual of that is that when she came back and started at MSD, she said it took her a week to figure out the maze because there are all these little cubbies, little cubicles, and everybody's in their own little cubicle, and nobody knows who else is around, and you walk through places and you come to a dead end because you can't, can't go any further in the cubicles. And so my understanding is that the cubicles will be going away.
She's taking out the cubicle farm.
Yeah, getting rid of the cubicle farm because she wants people to collaborate. She wants a more work-friendly, collaborative place to work, and really heavy on the resource piece. And I also loved the fact that she talked about her vision of really heavily growing our own as far as teachers went. She said, "I know we'll never be a Pennsylvania where we have an excess of teachers that we, that are trained in our schools," but she wants teacher academies in every school system across the state, and then looking to move those teacher academies into, into the community colleges and then further. And that research, research has shown that students who start their teacher education in a community college and then move to their last two years at a four-year institute actually do better than students who go straight into a four-year institution, which I thought was really intriguing. So I look forward to seeing how she implements all of this, and I, I welcome what she, what she talked about and what she plans to do. So good luck to her, and we will be hearing her, she will be one of the speakers at the conference, the fall conference that Mabe is putting on. So that will be another opportunity, as it was last year, to really sit down and have a focused session with her. This will be very good, so.
Her vision, her vision has been warmly received by the superintendents across the state.
Truly, and I think the fact that the, the State Board had the wisdom to choose someone who had experience as a superintendent in the state of Maryland, there's so many things unique to Maryland about the way it approaches education in public schools. I am glad that they selected her, so. That's it.
You're fair.
Lunch and Learn is fantastic. We, you know, the system never sleeps. In summer, you might not see the activity in playing fields, although there are some summer activities that are happening outside, but within the buildings themselves, there's a flurry of activity, professional development going on, teachers working on curriculum, leading documents, and assessment creation, and item creation, and really some, some really fantastic thought. With our kids, we're also doing centralized this year. At the Forest Center, we have our Tech Kids Camp, and we have our Space Camp going on, and next week, we start our Cyber Security Camp. There'll be two weeks that that, that'll be going on. Really, it's interesting to see all the activity going on, and all the kids and all the children all throughout the technical center. It is, it's really quite heartwarming. And the, yesterday, I had the rare privilege of dropping by because if you're not following the Twitter, you're missing out. So follow the Twitter. One of the things that you would have seen tweeted was by Mrs. Harding and Ms. Mandis for the Global International Studies Program. They were meeting with kids that were working on their capstone of their own volition and choice. They went to the Lenner Town High School Media Center, and they were working. And so I just had to drop in and praise students for making a great choice, an academic choice in the middle of the summer. And Ms. Harding and Mrs. Hager, the media specialists, were there working directly with the kids, and they were all talking about their capstone events, and they were all very engaged in research and civic responsibility. And a lot of it did rest, Roma, on the responsibility of students and students' interactions with one another and the larger community, and advocacy. So I really look forward to, if we can wrap back around your initiative of student and student-to-student relationships and the culture of our schools and the way in which we, we work with one another. That's such a, that's such a fantastic thing. I can't wait to do some, do some exploration on that this year and work with kids. So that's great, fun stuff. And that's all I have to say today, Mrs. Bailey.
Okay, that's great. Moving right along, we have no public comment. And next up is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And with that, we just jump right down to Ms. Susie Fowler and the Staffing Plan for Special Education.
Good morning, Mrs. Fowler.
Good morning, Mrs. Bailey, and Mrs. Washington, board members, Mr. Smith, Roma, welcome. When Roma was a STEM four student at Lexington Park, I certainly knew she would be in significant leadership positions as she grew, and congratulations to you. Alright, so, how do I make this go?
No.
No. Don't do that!
Run!
Yeah, I can't see any of it, so.
AV mute.
Sure, you guys know.
Oh!
Alright.
And now? And then? Okay. Have fun.
Alright. So I am here today to discuss two things. As the board is aware, every year, special education comes before you with the staffing plan, because the Maryland State Department of Education requires that you approve the staffing plan each year. And so that is CROMAR, and there are specific requirements as part of the staffing plan, and one is evidence of public input. The staffing plan was shared with Casey at its meeting in June. It has been posted on the Board of Ed website, and Casey posted it on their website, soliciting input. There has been no specific input as a result of those postings, but at the meeting, the members of Casey who attended that meeting were very pleased with the staffing plan and talked about that. So I feel like, you know, we've made a good faith effort, we have received some public input. Certainly, there is evidence of maintenance of effort, we're doing a really good job with that. And we'll go into staffing patterns and such, and talk about caseloads, et cetera. So these are the things that we consider as we're thinking about staffing, the IEPs, numbers of children to be served, looking at our population overall, making prediction regarding the percentages of students that we would expect to be participating in special ed. And then we always have to consider what the staff responsibilities are, because as I am sure you are quite well aware, they continue to increase in terms of compliance and paperwork. And if Dr. Salmon could do something about that, wouldn't that be awesome? So for the special education resource positions, we do use a census formula. In the elementary schools, one special education resource teacher per 200 students in grades K to 5 are assigned. And in our elementary schools, typically, there are one to three special education teachers depending on the size of the school. The average caseload is about 15. That doesn't mean no one has more than 15, and it doesn't mean no one has fewer than 15. When we average it all together, it's about 15 across the system. And then teachers, of course, have to consider not only their instructional responsibilities, but also their compliance and paperwork responsibilities as they are building their schedules. So for middle school, it is one special education resource teacher per 150 gen ed students. And as you know, I am new to this, this year, and so I asked the question, well, why, why would that be? And the answer predictably, for anyone who is familiar with middle school students, is it's middle school students. So there we have it. And then high school, we go back to one special education resource teacher per 200 students. And again, the average of the caseload is 15, elementary, middle, and high. So for the related service providers, we use a workload approach. The professional associations have taken a look for speech, OT, PT, they've had these work groups going on at the state, and the related service providers, in addition to the paperwork load that the teachers have, tend to have more medical assistance billing that requires additional paperwork, et cetera, et cetera, and that is considered as part of their workload. So the OTs and PTs have an average of 25 to 35 students per caseload. We do contract services for speech and language pathologists, whether they're contracted or not, that average caseload is 35 to 45 students. So at this point in time, we will need to be contracting for, we've had a recent physical therapist vacancy, we will probably have to contract for that. We have a number of contracted speech and language pathologists that we will talk about on our next item, and we have a portion of an OT that is contracted. This year, we moved to 11-month infant and toddler staff because that is a 12-month program. So they are 11 over 12. They stagger their work schedule during the summer, and their caseload is 25 to 30 children per teacher, and then there's one para for each of the sites, Banneker and Green Holly. And then for our regional programs, for preschool special ed, there is a standard staffing of one teacher and one parent, one parent, one para per nine students per session. So those teachers average about 18 students a day. And for LAP, again, one teacher, one para for nine students, same for Sale. Compass has a smaller ratio. Also, for preschool, special ed, LAP, and Sale, additional hourly staff is assigned to a particular class if there's a particular need. So there's a standard staffing, and then based on IEPs and student needs, there might be additional staffing. Compass has a smaller ratio because typically, there is more intensive case management for those children, and again, there might be hourly staff added in if, if necessary. And then for the Gateway to Independence Program, there is one teacher and two job coaches that work with those students at CSM and then on job sites and such. So we are required to resolve parent concerns and requests and such. We do have a process in place to do that. Certainly, from the central office, we work with schools. Sometimes things come directly to us, sometimes the concern begins at the school, and our central office staff works very closely with schools to ensure that we are addressing and resolving issues as they arise. So evaluation of the plan comes from family input, staff input, and we have a Maryland State Department, State Department Special Education Report Card on a yearly basis where we are scored according to a variety of indicators, which is also an evaluation tool. So those are, that in a nutshell broadly is the staffing plan. Are there questions?
You could ask questions, too. If you don't have any, okay, that's fine.
You spoke of one program being a 12-month program, but you have 11-month people in the slots. Do you see any reduction in the effectiveness when the students get a new teacher, or are they exposed to that teacher during the year?
It's the same staff person who's working with them, and the goal in infants and toddlers is to keep as much consistency as possible as the children are moving through that program. We, obviously, for a 12-month program, wouldn't it be great to have 12-month staff? That's a very significant budget issue. Working 11 over 12 allows our families not to miss services when they're on vacation. Typically, the families prefer to be doing a number of other things during the summer. And the program is designed not primarily for children to be learning from the service provider, but for the service provider to be teaching the family and the caregivers how to interact and intervene with the child, and that also gives time for the family to be intervening, and then the service provider, when they come back, to measure progress and see if what they've done to support the adults and the environment is sufficient to be making changes for the child. So, you know, it really, I think, 11 over 12 is a fairly good model at this point.
Thank you.
My question is on the, on the census, the formula plan. So if, so if we are, have, if we have one special education student for 200 students, then in our larger schools, do we have, I know some of them, most of the schools max at two. Do we have any schools that have three special ed teachers?
A number of the elementaries do.
Okay, and then if you're on that borderline, you know, then do the other occupational and physical therapists, do they help like relieve some of the work of the special ed, you know, because I'm assuming that everyone who has an IEP does not, you know, has a wide variety of support services that are needed.
The way we would address that, let's say... The way we would address that, let's say, in some of our smaller schools, they have over 200 students, but they have one special ed teacher. So we support that special ed teacher with paras.
Okay.
So they might depend, and it depends on the needs of the children. So it depends on what the IEPs are at that point. We're not just pushing staff in.
So you're still fluid in your staffing.
Absolutely. And so through either FTEs or through hourly paras, we can be flexible in terms of supplementing when we need to supplement.
Correct. Because I mean, I'm assuming, you know, even now with children entering the school system through kindergarten or just through, you know, moving in and transfers, that, you know, that your IEPs that you had at the end of the year are not the same ones that you might start at the beginning of the year with.
Correct.
So since the staffing stands already in place, just so there's a plan, because this seems very finite, you know, when you read it.
Right.
So I didn't think that it was, but I thought I'd ask.
There is flexibility. There's a limit to the flexibility, you know, because of budget. But there is flexibility. And while children move in, children also move out.
Right.
And so, you know, usually, it balances out pretty well, but not always. And sometimes, we either have to move some staff, which is more typically the hourly staff, you know, where we seldom are moving FTEs around, but just to supplement in that way.
Okay.
But good question. Thanks.
Mrs. Washington?
I think that you've met the spirit and the letter of the law of MSD and COMAR with the requirements for the staffing plan. This is the first time you have presented it to the board, and you have done a wonderful job. You do it with ease and clarity, and I thank you very much. I've heard good things about you in the community already in the short period of time that you have been there, and I know that will continue.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing this before us. It's interesting, your comment about all of the data that has to be collected. That was a topic that Dr. Salmon talked about, her intention to review all of COMAR and to remove things that are outdated or not appropriate, that that hasn't been done in a long time. And she intends to do that. She also intends to examine all of the data that's being requested by MSD. What is it being requested for? Why? How often does it have to be reported? Are there any possible changes that could be possible to address all of that? And then how is the data used? So if there's, if it's just being collected because somebody thought, wow, wouldn't this be nice if we knew this? She is really looking to address workload and make sure that we're, that everyone across the state is working smarter, not harder.
That would be wonderful.
Very much so. So hopefully, this will be part of that. Thank you very much.
Any words of wisdom?
Oh, no. No, other than I also, I echo, thank you, Ms. Fowler, for leading the special ed department. It's been very well done.
Okay. And with that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the special education staffing plan for school year 2016, 2017, as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And now, Ms. Fowler, you want to roll right into your professional services contracts?
So we would love to provide all of our services to children with our own employees, and we strive to do that. Currently, we have hired 21 special educators in this hiring cycle. And we currently have four openings, which that might sound like a lot, but I'm pretty happy that it is four. And I want to give a shout out to Dr. Williams and HR for helping us. They've just been awesome and allowed us some flexibility in our hiring. All of that being said, we are not able to fill all of our positions, particularly our therapists, with full-time equivalents. We have to contract in order to have the personnel to provide the services. So we have some contractors who are private contractors. They contract directly with us. And in that group, we have six speech and language pathologists and two licensed clinical social workers. So some of them are in our local budget, some of them come out of our medical assistant, and some of them come out of our medical assistant budget, and then one is at the charter school, and she is two days a week. So when you look closely at this, you will see that the numbers are different. Some of these folks are not full-time, and they might work half-time or three-quarter time or whatever, and that's primarily the difference in the costs that you see there. Are there any questions about private contractors?
Anyone? No.
Oh, that was the wrong thing to do.
There you go.
Okay. Here, let me do it this way. So in addition to that, then, we have a number of agencies that we contract with. And so our choice would be FTEs, then individual contracts, and there really is a last resort. We go to agencies, but thank goodness they're there because we need their services. We have got to have the personnel to meet the needs of the IEPs for our children. So these are the various agencies that we use. We very well may be adding one or two. We still have two speech and language pathology vacancies. And as I said, we may, we don't get an FTE for a physical therapist, we'll need a contract for a physical therapist as well. So, and again, you can see, I didn't put the names of the budgets, but the first one is the total, and then the local budget, and then the medical assistance budget, and then pass-through, I think, let's get this straight, pass-through, and then parentally-placed pass-through, and then the charter school. So those are the agencies. And then we do contract for a number of hourly paras from Abacus. And the 600, and am I doing something to make that jump?
No, it's them. It's them.
Okay.
It doesn't.
It's making me a little motion-sensitive here.
I thought it was just me.
The $650,000 is for 35 hourly applied behavior analysis paraeducators. They are typically working with students with autism or students who need significant behavior support. And they receive training from our board-certified behavior analysts. They are very key in our compass programs and in schools where children need this particular support. So that is really a cornerstone for our work in, with children with autism. And then you can see, we have an MA clerk, we have a full-time program assistant who manages our medical assistance program, and she has a three-day-a-week support person. And they are working with numbers from the moment they get in until the moment they leave, and they bring in, medical assistance is a very important and necessary funding stream for us. So the work they are doing is generating a number of funds that we really need. We have six hourly paras at various locations, and again, these are very flexible. So as needs in different schools arise or go away, we have those positions to, for flexibility. And then a para for transitioning, this is with Gateway, so an additional part-time para for Gateway. So for our total contracted services, these are the amounts for the total total to be Questions?
No questions.
The only question I have is for the individual contracts that we have, is there a lot of turnover, or is it typically the same people every year?
Typically, the same people.
Okay. And then what about through the services, the service agencies? Is there, like, a revolving door?
There's more turnover there.
Okay.
They, the agencies recruit from away from here. Our individual contracts are people who live here.
Right. That's what I understand.
And the agencies are recruiting and bringing people here, and sometimes they stay, and sometimes they don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the good news is you're attacking this from many different ways. You try many different ways to get the people we need to meet the needs of our special needs students. So you use the, you want the FTEs, that would be ideal, but when you can't get them, you go to individual contractors or to agency contracts or Abacus. So you're making sure that our needs are being met for our students, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You're very flexible.
We tie ourselves up sometimes.
The, I know with a number of these students, some of the more medically fragile may move in and out of various services. So with these contracted therapists, are these pay-as-you-go? So in other words, if a student is in the hospital for a month, are we still paying that contractor if they're only working with that particular student, or?
That's a good question. They all have a caseload. And so they are contracted by days, and most of them are full-time.
Okay.
And so one student is a part of their caseload, but just like when we have an FTE, if a student moves or, you know, might be on home and hospital teaching, or actually, that's a bad example because we probably go into the home. If they move and are not available for treatment, then eventually, some other child is going to come onto the caseload.
Okay. And would you explain the federal parentally-placed pass-through grant? Give us an example, perhaps? Because I don't recall that being brought to us before, so I'm not familiar with it, or I don't recall being familiar with it.
Would you help me with that?
I mean, because I can't decide if this is a, you know, the student is eligible for federal monies, and the parent chooses where it's going to go because it's awarded to the family, not the school system on behalf of the child, or I don't, I really don't understand.
The pass-through grants have been appropriated to the school districts for quite some time now, and it is incorporated in your adopted budget. And these funds have been utilized in prior years to support this program.
Maybe I just don't remember having seen them listed in this fashion.
We began listing them in this fashion probably about a year ago.
Okay.
So what we could do is, we could do our, a little bit of background on this and provide that information back to the board.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just an example would be, I'm interested to better understand exactly.
The difference between pass-through and parentally-placed pass-through.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe it's just a different pot of money, but is it utilized?
Do you want to know what type of student needs would be eligible for that grant? Is that what you're asking? Like?
What's the difference between a federal pass-through grant and then a parentally-placed pass-through grant? Is it reflective of the needs of the student, that they fall in a particular category? Or I don't understand what the distinction is. So if I, I don't want, like, pages and pages, like, just a quick Reader's Digest condensed version.
Sure. We can provide that for you.
So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you have any other questions?
No. That was it.
All right. So that would conclude this presentation. So do I have a motion for this action item? Anyone?
I move that the Board of Education approve the professional services contracts for special education by the providers recommended for speech and language, occupational therapy, orientation and mobility services, learning adjustment program therapists and paras for a grand total of $2,129,643.55, with funding sources from medical assistance, local contracted therapists, and federal pass-through and parentally-placed pass-through grants.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Non-resident student tuition rates, Dr. Ridgell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's that time of year again to bring before you for your consideration the non-resident student tuition rates and what they will be for the coming school year 2016, 2017. Just as a reminder, the tuition rates are established annually by the board. These rates presented to you today are recommended by the superintendent. They, should a student ask to be enrolled in St. Mary's County Public Schools that would be paying tuition after the first day of school, then we would prorate that tuition to be less than the 180 days, based on how many days they would be attending. Tuition for the half-day programs are then charged at one-half of the rate. Parents then that ask to send their students here then complete a tuition contract. That tuition bills then are sent quarterly by fiscal services. And any staff members that live outside of St. Mary's County that wish to send their children to school in St. Mary's, the tuition is waived for. The rates for the past school year for regular education in-state, out-of-county was $5,825. Out-of-state for regular education was $11,661. Special education rates then are set at 300% of the regular education rates. So I bring to you today, proposed for 2016, 2017, is that the in-state, out-of-county rate for regular education would be $6,197. That is an increase of $372 over last year. And for out-of-state regular education, $12,150. That is an increase of $489 over last year. Special education rates would then again be 300% of regular education. We arrive at these numbers based on the number of FTEs that we had last year for the official enrollment, and then look at the budget for the upcoming year. So the total allocations that the school system will have from state, county, local, and federal sources will be $207,946. In that, then, by per pupil, the state allocation would be $5,953. County allocation, $6,153. Local, $44. And those are the three that goes into the calculation since we would get federal funding for all the students regardless. So in determining the in-state, out-of-county tuition, we would take the county amount of $6,153, add to it the $44 local, to arrive at the tuition rate of $6,197. For out-of-state, then, we take that amount and add to it as well the state amount of $5,953, to arrive at $12,150 per student for regular education, and then multiplying it by three for special education. So the recommendation, then, is to ask for your approval for the non-resident tuition rates as recommended, and they would be for the 2016, 2017 school year. Any questions?
Mr. Carter?
No questions.
Ms. Washington?
No. Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
No questions.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board approve non-resident student tuition rates as established by the Board of Education of St. Mary's County Public Schools and adjusted annually upon the recommendation of the superintendent of the schools. Their proposed rates for 2016, 2017 are $6,197 for in-state, out-of-county, $12,150 for out-of-state, with special education rates set at 300% of regular education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rigel.
Thank you very much. And now, we are on to ice cream, on this hot summer day. Ms. McIndore?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry. The student meal program allows the sale and consumption of ice cream products that are sold à la carte in school cafeterias. On February twenty-fifth, 2015, the Board of, Board of Education approved the use of Fairfax County Ice Cream Contract with Berliner Specialty Distributors, which was continued use through, um, the past school year. Anaronda County Public Schools awarded the contract to Hershey's Ice Creamery. The contract was awarded through a competitive sealed bid process. Anaronda County acted as the lead agent on this contract, which included Baltimore County, Carroll County, Charles County, Montgomery County, and St. Mary's County. In addition to ice cream, Hershey's Creamery Company will provide freezers as needed to the local schools. The new contract offers competitive pricing and quality products. It's anticipated the annual spending will not exceed forty-five thousand dollars per year on ice cream products throughout the duration of the contract, which can be renewed through five thirty-one, 2020. The recommended action is that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the use of Anaronda County Public Schools Contract Number Sixteen, CM dash one-three-four, Ice Cream and Freezers with Hershey's Creamery Company of Elk Ridge, Maryland, to the purchase of ice cream products on an as-needed basis, up to forty-five thousand dollars per year throughout the duration of the contract.
Any questions, John? Mr. Carney?
Yeah, the, the forty-five thousand is just, you, you're buying inventory, and you're gonna turn around and sell that.
Correct.
Yeah, so-
So, it's throughout the year.
Right, it's just a wash. Thank you.
I have any questions, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Washington?
No questions.
Ms. Allen?
No questions.
Okay.
Now, you, you could have brought samples.
Yeah.
Maybe later.
That did occur to me.
That was a good, I should have done that, especially on today.
It is only nine fifty-one.
There is never a wrong time for ice cream.
Do not let my son hear you say that.
I second that.
Okay. Thank you very much, and with that, do I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of the Anaronda County Public Schools Contract Sixteen, CM dash one-three-four, Ice Cream and Freezers with Hershey's Creamery Company of Elk Ridge, Maryland, to purchase ice cream products on an as-needed basis, up to forty-five thousand dollars per year throughout the duration of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, uh, Mr. Varner, and what do we have?
We have an eye test, that's what that whole thing was. Oh, my goodness.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ice cream is a lot more interesting.
Cleaning, uh- Cleaning products and custodial supplies aren't as enticing as ice cream, I know, but I'll do my best.
One does follow the other, though.
Quite often, actually. I'm here before you today to, uh, ask for your approval on a new contract for, uh, Department of Operations to procure custodial supplies and cleaning products. Uh, let me start off with a little bit of background information. As you know, uh, we're responsible for providing students, teachers, faculty, and the community with clean and healthy environments, uh, in schools and offices. Our annual budget for the procurement of these type of products, uh, for FY seventeen is three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. For the last five years, we, we procured, uh, we bid out a contract, uh, individual by-line contract, in which we had pricing per item. That contract expired, uh, this summer, and I'm here to talk to you about, um, similar methodology we use to, uh, contract out for the next year with, with four options after that, to extend that contract. We use item bidding, obviously, to, um, take advantage of competitive pricing from each item, uh, that we purchase, of which there are many, as you can see in the attachment, while we can maintain control of the quality of the products that we purchase through, uh, such a methodology. This June, uh, we used that strategy, again, put out our own contract, uh, to procure supplies for a new contract term, with some additions, deletions, changes, uh, due to the fact that there's been some technological advances in the last five years since this contract was, uh, our previous contract was issued. We've transitioned to full team cleaning, which, uh, had some minor changes there. And a couple of years ago, state mandated to go towards green cleaning supplies, which we do, uh, necessitated some changes to our bid items. On June seventh, we posted that bid, uh, we received, uh, bids for items from a number of vendors. The procurement office and, and my department are recommending awards to four vendors for the amount of products listed here, Calico Industries, Daycon Products, S. Friedman and Sons, as well as Veritiv Operating Company. Items sixty-nine and seventy, which are trash can liners that we use in our schools, were rejected, uh, due to the fact that some issues arose with the specificity of our, uh, there were some confusion among the vendor, vendors about size and, and thickness. We're, uh, Vicki Mail and I are gonna work together towards creating a, a better spec for those two products, and we're gonna rebid those, uh, in the coming weeks. Uh, we did not receive bids for items eleven, twenty-two, and eighty-six, and we're not going to award, as I mentioned, sixty-nine and seventy, but also seventy-seven and eighty. But the vast majority of items, uh, we did receive a bid, and we are prepared to award that. So, at this time, I'm asking for your recommendation, uh, your recommended action on contract SMCPS two thousand seventeen O dash CS, to the vendors that were identified here for the purchase of cleaning supplies on an as-needed basis throughout the duration of this contract. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Mr. Carney?
On the items that you did not receive, uh, a bid for, did you have substitutes that you, or is there, uh, going to be a follow-on procurement with different specs?
Luckily, um, those items aren't necessarily items that we use often, and we can procure those from, uh, True Value and Lowe's, which we have a purchasing arrangement with locally.
Thank you.
Do you have a timeline for the, for the additional items to go out to bid?
I don't, we hope to have those out very soon.
Okay.
But we have enough in supply in our warehouse, uh, to take us through the beginning of the school year, so there's no concern there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Well, I, I had the same question that, uh, Mr. Carney had, so I appreciate that answer. What is your experience with these particular vendors?
Calico Industries is, is, is a company that we've used for many years. S. Friedman and Sons, we're currently using them as well. The only new one to us is Veritiv this year, so I don't have a lot of knowledge with them, but we're very comfortable with the other three.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Allen? I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the contract award of ITB SMCPS dash two-zero-one-seven dash O dash CS to the identified vendors for the purchase of cleaning supplies on an as-needed basis throughout the duration of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And next is the capital improvements program, the budget amendment, Ms. Howe.
Um, this is a process that we go through on quite a regular basis. We're back before you every quarter, um, as part of a county budget process. What we do is, we get a listing of all of our current projects, we cash flow out, I work very closely with Mr. Hartwick, and we cash flow out our balances of our projects over the next, um, three or four quarters, and that allows the county to look at their cash flow needs and where they are with bonds. As part of that, the last piece of it is to look at any projects that are completed and ready to be closed out. We did have three projects this time, totaling one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, which are ready to be closed out. Projects are completed, all work is done, all payments made, um, and the funds would be returned to the county's FIN FY seventeen reserve. Those three projects are Greenview Knolls HVAC in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars, the Leonardtown High School Tennis and Court and Track Project for seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, and the Margaret Brent Middle School Chiller Replacement for sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Again, this is always at the due diligence of staff to ensure that projects come in under budget, and, um, we are able then to return those, um, projects' fundings for future use if, if needed. So, the action would be to approve the return of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, um, from three projects to the county FIN FY seventeen reserve. I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Carney?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
Thank you, this is the usual and customary procedure that we, we do, make sure the projects are completed, and then closed out, and return the money to the county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
That's a pretty significant amount, um, the, uh, overage on the Leonardtown High School, um, tennis court and track resurfacing. Was that because, um, the scope of work was unknown, and so, the, um, award was larger until we understood?
We added funds for that project, um, to do surveys, um, in the beginning, some engineering work, because we were really concerned about knowing what the track surface was going to be. And we did have to spend a little more money on the project than we originally anticipated, but we were still within budget. This really came from the design and engineering side of the project. Equally, we have current, um, grate mills and chop-to-con that are going on, and we did front-end that a little, and we're investigating some of the cracks and things. So, we do, on these, where there's a little bit more unknown of what the substrate's gonna look like, do add a little bit of additional money.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of one hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars from the three identified local capital improvements program projects to the commissioners of St. Mary's County FIN seventeen reserve capital improvements project account, as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, August tenth, twenty sixteen, at nine AM. We will not have a second meeting in July, so that will only be a few short days before school begins, the new year, everyone will be all excited. So, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.
Well done.